Do with each other, give us some wisdom and guidance that we need to do your will and glorify your name, or we're asking things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, can we get a motion to approve the agenda with one amendment under committee? Council member reports can include that in number five for W C B A. And Councilman Voss will give the report.
Mr. Mayor, I have made motion to approve the amendment.
Second. We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. The agenda is approved. Council, do we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16th, coming from the flag?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. The minutes have been approved. Um, moving on to nomination for recognition. I'd like to nominate Darren Downs, Ann McCollum, and Don Stevenson and the All School Reunion Board for certificates of recognition. Darren and Ann were both doing some volunteer work cleaning up the weeds around town. And I heard, Dom, that you were out cleaning up the town too in preparation.
Yeah, I was trying to help down some stuff in the alleys.
Would you? Well, uh, I, volunteerism is something that I've been trying to promote for the community. And I just want you all to know that I really appreciate you going an extra mile to try to make it a nice all-school reunion. And then also the all-school reunion board for, uh, for the work they did to, uh, to get it to happen. So, uh, is there any other certificates of recognition or nominations for recognition?
I'd like to have my neighbor move from that list.
Okay. Um, is there any reason why you clicked out your name?
Because I didn't do it for recognition.
Okay.
Leadership by example is one of the best things that we can do. And that's what we're trying to recognize.
Yeah, I just think it's a good example that we set for the community by going out and doing work like that. And Ann and myself had a conversation. If older had I been in town and knew that it was going on, I would have gotten my weed eater out and came and helped myself. And I also heard that, um, you know, that, uh, somebody might have taken offense to a message that was left. And, uh...
Oh, what'd you want me to dig it?
It wasn't meant to be offensive.
What else would you want me to dig it?
It was about trying to correspond and plan when we go out and do volunteer work in the community so that we don't overlap our volunteer work, that we don't go into areas that maybe we could cause damage or problems for the community.
So was there damage?
Um, not that I heard of, but there's a possibility. So it's good to keep all the players...
There is or there's not?
All of the players involved, let, let everybody know what's going on. And that way, you know, like, um, I, and I left the message because I was approached about some volunteerism that was being done that maybe wasn't cleared or maybe got into the irrigated areas like parks where things could get damaged. So, um, that's why I left the message. Oh, full disclaimer, everybody, I left the message for Darren and he was going around town playing it for folks. So I just wanted to...
Yeah, I sure was.
I just wanted to be clear...
Do you want me to play the message so everybody can hear it?
Uh, sure, yeah. Why not?
Basically, you said stay out of parks. Am I not, am I not right or what?
Yeah, you need to collaborate for public work.
Then why?
Huh?
Why?
Um...
What was done in the parks that was wrong?
Well, for one thing, I'd like to mention that, but I know who you are.
I'm talking to him right now.
That's enough. I'd like, uh, Councilman Voss to be able to speak.
Hey, I, I heard that we, we have one city employee that is trying to create a, a, uh...
I'm not smiling.
Well, try to smile. Anyway, we're trying to create a habitat that will be friendly to the monarch butterfly. And part of that is the, the milkweeds and things that were grown in one of the parks. And I heard that that got mowed down and they, they would rather it didn't. And if nobody was upset, it was just happened that way.
I wasn't gonna say anything, I didn't bring this up, but I'll just let you look at it. Let's see what you think.
Well, I'm not going to give an opinion on this because I have no idea what a habitat for a monarch butterfly would look like. So, thank you for the pictures though.
So you don't see anything wrong with it?
As I said, I'm not going to comment on this until I know what the habitat for monarch butterflies look like and a part of the community can have a little bit of...
Exactly why I wasn't gonna bring it up. Because nobody sees what I see.
Okay.
And it's obvious.
We live in a community and lots of people have different opinions and ideas about a lot of different things.
There's a fire hybrid there. And it is being blocked.
Oh, okay, by a weed. All right.
Exactly.
So anyway...
Why not cut the weeds down?
Councilman Downs, we've removed your nomination for recognition.
Yeah, I understand that.
So we're gonna go ahead and move on with the meeting. Uh, but thank you.
Yep, let's just cover it up.
Thank you for volunteering and cleaning up in our community. Okay, is there any further nominations for recognition? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on, um, to our certificate of recognition for, uh, Ray, or, Mr. Ray, uh, thank you so much for how you're volunteering and cleaning up in the community. We really appreciate it. Um, uh, who nominated? Uh, Darren nominated Jeff for a certificate.
John nominated him.
Oh, well, he pointed at you, Darren, so I, that's what I thought. Um, thank you, sir.
I'd like to say so.
Yeah.
I did it for my neighbor, you know, because he, he's not able to do it. And I did it because it made it better. And I did it because it made me feel good. And I just want you to know, I appreciate, and I don't like milkweeds.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
It's really bad.
You made us all feel good, and we thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
I appreciate you all.
Yep. Have a good one. Moving on to citizens business verbal. Item number one, Bruce Perkins for motorcycle parking.
Thank you. Rally's coming up again, so I'd like to get this out of the way. Uh, motorcycle parking for rally. Our special dates are from the first to the tenth. And we'd like to do the blocking off the center from the first to the eleventh. I don't believe there's too much, you know, overlap needed. I don't know, I could be fooled again this year. Uh, it would be from railroad, okay, all the way up to, uh, Seneca. And then leave that intersection open from Seneca to Sumner. And leave that intersection open. So it's basically a block or half two blocks.
Does the council entertain a motion to block off the, uh, the street for motorcycle parking?
I'm so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
So this is just one block from railroad to Seneca?
I'm sorry, second.
So this is just one block from railroad to Seneca? And then Seneca to Sumner? And then Seneca to Sumner? Leave the two intersections open. Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, let's show by hands. All those in favor signify by saying aye and then show hands.
Aye.
Councilman Downs, are you voting on the motion?
I didn't vote.
Okay. Um, we're all here to vote, so we're just wondering, am I even on the vote?
Vote same time?
Uh...
It might be vote.
Oh, all those against signify by saying nay or show of hands. Okay, uh, majority have the motion passes. We are gonna block that second for motorcycle parking.
I'd like to go on to another subject we didn't mention, which I do every year, is put tables and chairs out and have open container and the tables and chairs in front of Perkins Tavern. So I'd like to have that open container for tables and chairs outside of Perkins Tavern on the sidewalk, you know, at that same time period, which would be the first through the eleventh during regular operating hours and be picked up after last.
I'm moved we allow Perkins Taverns to have open containers sitting right outside as a media door in his building there.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion properly seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
I've got a question for you. Are you gonna put up umbrellas and make it look pretty like we do in France?
The last time we were like that, still sitting out back all broken.
I thought you were gonna tell me it was inconstrous.
Pretty close, is what happened to it. Uh, I'll see, but you know, it's like I said, it, it all depends. Storm comes up, they go flying.
One thing I will tell you, that years ago, we, we bought the fountain inn around our pool there when we had it. There's a new one on the other one. And this kid is stable and it's solid and they go through them and the elves destroy.
Oh, the city's gonna allow me to bat that to the sidewalk?
Well, you can go and talk to the fellow that owns the fountain now, he might still have those umbrellas.
That's okay.
But you can get them, I know, so they're, they're available.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Like, one more quick little plank is, uh, I'd like to see a little bit more support from the city and the police department on bicycles and scooters and stuff on the sidewalk. You know, last year, I stopped two of them, police officer came and talked to me and I was a bad man. So, you know, because mom called up and complained. Uh, I just ask for a little more support when it comes to that for safety reasons. Thank you.
I agree with that. But nothing is done enough.
Moving on to citizens business verbal. Uh, item number two, Sandra Martin, Classic Summer Drags, no complaints.
So I came in November of this last year to ask you for the approval to have the Classic Summer Drags and to tell you what was happening. So it's time. We're coming forth with it in two weeks. So we need a couple of permits to move forward with the Classic Summer Drags. Open container, Main Street, this Friday night, of course, is our band and our dancing and the vendors and the cafes, so...
So do you know the form you're supposed to fill out?
I already did. She has everything.
We have one on there.
I filled out like five of them out.
Five?
So Stacy hasn't, I just wanna say one thing. I, I'm having a beef and battle with the county when they do a few things because they're kind of hesitant and they're not very cooperative right now and I don't know why. But I want to tell you that Stacy and Amber have bent over backwards. And if any of you have a problem or do anything, if I get bitchy, it's not at Stacy or Amber because she has absolutely bent over backwards to help me through this whole process. I just need y'all to know that.
Thanks for saying that, Stacy. So do we entertain a motion to approve the, um, open container permit, event permit, Sandy Martin and Sammy?
So what day is the, what, and how many hours?
What do you want that to be?
Oh, you'll? She has it on her. Do you want me to do Friday? Do you want me just to start with the days?
Do you, are you, because are you needing that work? Because your first event's on the sixteenth, correct?
No, there's nothing on the sixteenth. Our first event's on the seventeenth and that's, um, Thursday, which is the poker run. And the only thing, we don't need anything for that. We're not asking for that because we're going to the event center afterwards after the poker run and so there's nothing that day. But Friday, we need open container on Main Street because of the street dance and the vendors down there and then the autocross at the school, but we have a garden that they've already, hopefully, we can have a beer garden on the Main Street that we're shutting down. We've already established that, so we just need the open container on Friday. Saturday on drag racing, Highway sixteen, correct, wait, am I wrong? Yeah, goodbye, guys. Highway sixteen, we are having a beer garden there also. Those beer gardens, and I've already had to check with our insurance, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but we are not allowing people to leave the beer gardens for those two events. When they're on the school, at that one, and when we're on Highway sixteen, they have to stay in our beer garden, correct? Isn't that what our insurance is? And then we made an agreement with the state for that too. So if there's containers going around, our people will have bans. If they don't have a ban and they're carrying a container, that did not come from us.
So they're not leaving those? So we just need it on, when it's on the street for the eighteen?
For the Friday.
For the open container?
Yep. Friday. That they are not leaving the beer gardens according to our, by our insurance.
Sometimes they do.
Would that be sort of an accurate portrayal of, you know, Weston County, nineteen oh three, where the, where the sun set on the old west?
Oh, for sure. I mean, yeah, yeah. You definitely had the changing of the guard and times are changing. You're, you're Cowboys and Indian battle. I mean, the lightning creek was essentially the last one. And then vigilante business has been going on, still goes on now, but just something like Slim's ordeal was, yeah, it's pretty old west there, that's...
Well, right on, you know, right on Main Street and the trestle.
Yeah, that's eighteen hundred stuff.
But that was, you know, that movie scene of a mob showing up and taking someone away from the sheriff, there wouldn't a heck of a lot more of that happened after nineteen oh three, I don't think.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So it was the end of a, end of an era, I think, and it's, you know, it's, times are changing.
According to our, by our insurance.
Sometimes they do.
Well, she's got, we have like five, um, twenty-four hour catering permits.
Yep.
I just wasn't sure which ones would happen.
So Friday starts at eleven o'clock in the morning and goes until the ban shuts down. This Friday.
Ban goes from seven to ten.
Go out first one, sorry. This is the seventeenth, nine AM to the eighteenth at nine AM. And then this one, this is the Classic Summer Drags Car Show.
That's Thursday, or Friday.
And that's when the dancers?
Yes, Friday, correct, correct.
Seven to ten.
Correct. And then Saturday for the races and Friday day for the autocross is at the beer gardens.
So Sandra, are you asking for an open container just for Friday night?
We don't need one, well, we have to have them, they have to have open containers in the beer gardens where they're at, because you're, we have to shut down the street.
What's the beer garden?
It's gonna be on the street because we can't have it on school property. So we've already asked to have it on the street.
Okay, so, Sandy, we're gonna, we have two spots on the agenda, so we'll just, uh...
We're moving?
Well, no, it's okay. We'll just bump your citizens business and writing up and then we'll approve your twenty-four hour catering permits. So, uh, we have a twenty-four hour catering permit, um, state of Wyoming, county of Weston Downer. And by virtue of the provisions of section twelve dash four, dash five oh two subsection B of the state of Wyoming Alcoholics Beverage Control Laws, uh, the sum of twenty dollars was paid by Sandy Martin doing business as Pizza Barn for the meat and greet and casino right. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only, beginning on the seventeenth day of July twenty twenty-five at nine AM through the eighteenth day of July twenty twenty-five at nine AM. Uh, do I get a motion to approve the twenty-four hour catering permit for pizza barn?
Do you have a physical address for that?
Thursday night is at the event center, Fairgrounds Road, is that what it is?
That's not in the city.
Yeah, but you guys still, we still have to do it to you guys through the...
My mistake.
It's not Fairgrounds Road, it's Stampede.
Stampede, maybe. I didn't know that, I'm sorry.
Do we need a solid physical address?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can you just, uh, check?
We always have the event center, I never had any address.
Twenty-four Fairgrounds Road.
That's what I want.
Okay, for the property located at twenty-four Fairgrounds Road, uh, do we still have a motion?
If you're on, if you're on, I move that we allow Sandra Martin to have a twenty-four hour permit from nine AM to seventeenth to nine AM to eighteenth for twenty-four Fairgrounds Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
What, what time is that over on Saturday, Sandra? Uh, I mean, excuse me, over on Friday?
So Friday night, whenever the ban's done is when we're finished. And then Saturday, it starts at nine o'clock and runs through on Highway sixteen, we're done at, would we put down five, did we say five, Greg? Five or six that night, we're done with that one. So Friday, we're supposed to be done by ten or eleven.
At night?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, you got a county license. You got a letter from the county saying that you're good standing and you're allowed to cater?
Yes, yes.
I had to do it, so that's why I...
Oh, no, I have that, trust me.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay. We'll move on to, uh, the next...
Thank you, sir.
What's that? Oh, yeah, thanks, Sandy. Um, yeah, moving on to the next twenty-four hour catering permit, state of Wyoming, Wyoming county of Weston. That under, by virtue of provisions of section twelve dash four, dash five oh two subsection B of the state of Wyoming Alcoholics Beverage Control Laws, twenty dollars was paid by Sandy Martin doing business as Pizza Barn for the Classic Summer Drags Car Show. Uh, this license is for a catering permit, is for the term of one day only, beginning on the eighteenth day of July twenty twenty-five at seven AM and through the nineteenth day of July twenty twenty-five at seven AM. Does the council entertain a motion to approve, oh, uh, in and upon the premise of the Antlers two oh five West Main, Newcastle, Wyoming, uh, for the Classic Summer Drags Car Show? Same time for measures? Do we entertain a motion to approve the twenty-four hour catering permit?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
We have a question on the last one. Did we ever vote that she could have the twenty-four hour catering permit for the...
Open container?
Open container?
And we, we never finished the open container.
Oh, we, we approved the hearing permit, but we didn't approve the open container.
Okay, that was Mr. Kenny's...
That won't leave us at last. Thanks for pointing that out, Chris. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Now we can go back to the open container. And what was the, uh, where was the locale of the open container?
We're talking on the eighteenth?
On the eighteenth, I didn't write it down. Then the street dance.
The street dance is the nineteenth.
The, the street?
Street dance is the seventeenth, from seven to ten.
No, it'll be eighteen.
I guess you shouldn't have sat down yet.
Okay, I'm coming back. I thought we were done, sorry. Okay, so let's look at this one more time, I'm gonna stand and try and do this. Wednesday is the sixteenth is registration, Thursday is the seventeenth, which is just the poker run and the event at the event center. Friday, which is the eighteenth, is the car show, the open container, the everything happening on Main Street and the autocross at the school, which is at the beer garden. The nineteenth is Saturday, where it'll be the drag racing and the open contai, or the beer garden on Highway sixteen. Sunday, I hope everybody goes home.
So you're looking for open container for Main Street?
Yes.
And both beer gardens?
Do you need an open container if they don't leave the beer garden? That's my question. I don't know that. I just know that we need the permit to have the beer gardens, but since our insurance, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but our insurance will not allow them to leave the beer garden. That's why they're getting banned, so they're our people. So they cannot leave the beer garden with what we sell them, they have to stay in our perimeter. So I don't know if we need an open container, because if somebody comes in there and doesn't have our band on, then we're not responsible for that.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the primary thing we would need to know is what, uh, we need to know the boundaries of your beer garden. Just essentially, we need to know where the permit's going to apply and where it's not. That's the biggest issue for, as far as the enforcement side of it.
Okay, so on Friday, we're blocking off that road. Greg, help me. What road is that? And by the school?
Um, we're blocking off from Stampede to Highway sixteen.
Yes.
Along the line.
And that is for Saturday, the autocross for the high school.
Beer garden is slated for, I think it's about two hundred, about a hundred feet west of the intersection of Stampede. We'll have a tent there fenced in.
Yes. And I apologize, Chuck was supposed to have our map here to show you guys and he didn't show up.
We do have security staff planned to be at the entrance. So that'll be fenced in?
Yep, yep.
Easily defying the area. Or, 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 or...
Yep.
Anybody outside of beer garden?
It's not ours.
Is a beer or...
Yeah, it's nothing good, huh?
If they have nothing, you can ask them. So you're not asking for any open container outside of that?
Nope, on Saturday, nope, on Saturday, it's in our beer garden area, whatever our area is, and on Friday, it's in our beer garden area. We are not responsible for anything out of that. And everybody that buys beers from us will have a band on.
I, I guess the only thing I would say is it would probably just be the most fair thing to make sure there's something posted, letting people know that open containers are not allowed outside of that barricade.
Okay.
Just so they know. It takes away their ability to say, well, I didn't know, how am I supposed to know? Because that's, you know, intent is an important thing if you're enforcing the laws.
Okay, we can do that. And then, I, why am I there? I might have to let you guys know, on the night at five o'clock, across from the event center at search and rescue, Lynn Busco is going to head all of our security, of all of our staff, and we've got all of his people and law enforcement. So that night at five o'clock, any of you that want to come and listen to that, all of our law enforcement will be there. Um, the state patrol will be there, the highway department will be there, and Lynn Busco's security team will be there. Anybody that asks questions, you're more than welcome to come there and ask any questions or receive so that we know that we have a handle on what's coming. Right now, we're anticipating a pretty big crowd.
So I'm still confused as to the parameters. On Main Street is where you wanna...
Open container. Open container, Friday, Main Street, all the cars will be parked on Main Street.
That's the only open container.
As far as I know, the rest of it'll be beer gardens, right?
Okay, so we just need to define
This is the farmer's market, okay, so this is Main Street, okay? Where is the beer garden gonna be here?
We're not having a beer garden on Main Street.
Except, it's on Stampede.
There, there only a beer garden is gonna be for the school and the races on highway sixteen.
So what did we give you?
For the dance.
Cause the dance, and we are catering by Antler, they're gonna be able to take their drinks out and run up and down the street with them.
Okay, so that, there's open containers there.
Well, if you have the permit, right, and the permit has boundaries to what's being catered, and also I don't know why you would need the Chief, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but we're kinda getting into the realm of flirting when people go into a catering event where they're legally allowed to have the drinks, and then they walk out. And then you're sitting there going, well, that's unfortunate that you did that. So wouldn't it be easier just to do an open container for the area in general?
Thank you.
You know, I think would probably be better for the people attending the event if they were allowed to have her, beyond the, just the beer garden. So long as we can do it safely.
So our insurance said, they don't care if they do, the only thing we're doing the bans for and making sure that we do that is because we have to card everybody. So let's say I give Walter a beer, and he's only eighteen, and he goes out there and charges with his sixteen-year-old buddies, I'm not responsible for that.
How'd you know my plan?
I knew it. So that's why they said that we have to keep that in there, am I wrong there? Because once they step out of our area, I don't know if they're gonna do that beer too.
Well, and so long as the beverage is purchased with impact
That's like any open container
Correct, correct, you are absolutely correct, Dan, you are absolutely correct.
So long as, as you keep the beverages purchased at that beer garden
Mm-hmm.
within your perimeter, your insurance should be fine.
Okay.
Whoever's outside of that, if they bring their own or whatever
Not my problem.
That's all up to you.
Yep.
I don't have a problem with
Open containers.
Container permit on top of the beer garden permit, but I'm sure there's some business logistics behind that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think we're confusing the three different events, yeah. So there's two events with beer, highway and highway sixteen. Those are separate. The open container for Main Street is
The car show.
From what I understand, it's gonna be just like what we just did for all school areas.
Correct.
It's gonna be the two blocks of each street, allowing people to walk up and down the street with, with drinks.
So Friday, the eighteenth, on Main Street, open container.
Right.
And the boundaries that were provided
Right.
in the special events permit. So do we have a motion to allow open container on Main Street on Friday? Uh, under the parameters of the special events permit?
Something.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion carries, we have open containers on Main Street.
Perfect. So do you wanna go to the school and the catering at the highway sixteen or what?
So you have permits for those, right?
I, I, no, you're, you're, we're doing, that's
Yeah, you've offered permits, right?
Yep.
For those two, and then boundaries around them? Or not, fenced off, fenced off areas?
Oh, yeah, on, at the school we do, because you can't have alcohol on school property, that's the state, so we can't have it there, so we do have our little area. But like Derek said, if somebody leaves, maybe we should have open containers for both areas.
Uh, I don't think the city can do an open container on a school area, actually, I think there's some issues with that, but if you have the permit, and this isn't, the reason I had said for, for Main Street was, um, I thought you had a few beer gardens there, then Greg clarified. Um, if you have the, the, the bound, the boundaries kind of out, I mean, they're kind of subject to their own issues and if they leave, so
And that's what I'm telling you, we are not responsible with those out of our area.
Okay, so we should just go ahead and move on to the last three twenty-four hour catering permits?
Okay, I think we got to tell her, yes.
Well, wait, how about if I told you the green bans that the drivers are having, they're not allowed to have alcohol at all? Drivers that are doing any cars at all, if they have a green ban, they cannot have alcohol or they're kicked out. They can't drive under.
Good idea.
What a thought.
So we'll go ahead and move on to the twenty-four hour catering permit, state of Wyoming, county of Weston, that under by virtue provisions of section twelve dash four dash five oh two subsection B of the Wyoming state of, or the state of Wyoming alcoholic beverage control laws, uh, the twenty dollars paid by Sandy Martin doing business as Pizza Barn upon the premise of Casper Avenue, Newcastle, Wyoming, for an event more specifically described as follows, classic summer drags autocross. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only, beginning on the eighteenth day of July twenty twenty-five at zero seven AM through the nineteenth day of July twenty twenty-five at zero seven AM. We have a motion to approve the twenty-four hour catering permit?
Someone?
Do you have a second? We have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, twenty-four hour catering permit passes.
This place is full of, you can tell the people that like to be with old people, because they really take care of your good, and are very kind.
Twice a day, every day, activities, people have an organized activity that's always interesting.
Everybody loves to play bingo, we play it three times a week here. We also have ceramics that you can paint. Really pleasant to live here, it's a good place to be.
Two more to go, folks. All right, uh, next twenty-four hour catering permit, state of Wyoming, county of Weston, that under by virtue of the provisions of section twelve dash four dash five oh two subsection B of the state of Wyoming alcoholic beverage control laws, uh, twenty dollars paid by Sandy Martin doing business as Pizza Barn upon the premise of Stampede and highway sixteen bypass for an event more specifically described as follows, classic summer drags, drag races. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only, beginning on the nineteenth day of July twenty twenty-five at zero seven hundred AM through the twentieth day of July twenty twenty-five at zero seven hundred AM. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the twenty-four hour catering permit?
So.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion carries for the twenty-four hour catering permit. One more. Twenty-four hour catering permit, state of Wyoming, county of Weston, that under by virtue of the provisions of section twelve dash four dash five oh two subsection B of the state of Wyoming alcoholic beverage control laws, uh, the twenty dollars paid by Sandy Martin doing business as Pizza Barn, um, upon the premise of Weston County Event Center for an event more specifically described as follows, banquet and award ceremony. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only, beginning on the nineteenth day of July twenty twenty-five at zero nine hundred AM through the twentieth day of July twenty twenty-five at zero nine hundred AM. Uh, do we entertain a motion to approve the twenty-four hour catering permit for Pizza Barn?
So.
Second. We have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
I think the city should get a cut for all the
Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries, we got all your permits, Sandy.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I hope this one
We appreciate you and the work you're doing to get this abandoned, pal.
I'm trying.
All right, um, moving on to more twenty-four hour catering permits. Uh, we have, uh, uh, Cap'n Bottle, Tanya Christensen, request for twenty-four hour catering permits. Um, do you want me to go ahead and read the letter? No, we'll move straight to the twenty-four hour catering permit, state of Wyoming, county of Weston, that under by the virtue provisions of section twelve dash four dash five oh two subsection B of the state of Wyoming alcoholic beverage control laws, uh, the sum of twenty dollars paid by Tanya Christensen doing business as Cap'n Bottle, um, in and upon the premise of Casper Avenue, Newcastle, Wyoming, for an event more specifically described as classic summer drags autocross. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only, beginning on the eighteenth day of July twenty twenty-five at zero seven hundred AM through the nineteenth day of July twenty twenty-five at zero seven hundred AM. Uh, do we entertain a motion to approve the twenty-four hour catering permit?
I move we approve Tanya's request for twenty-four hour catering permit at Casper Avenue.
Second. We have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion?
So there's two separate beer gardens then, she'll have one, Cap'n Bottle will have one, is that?
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Move on to the next twenty-four hour catering permit. Uh, twenty-four hour catering permit, state of Wyoming, county of Weston, that under by virtue of provisions of section twelve dash four dash five oh two subsection B of the state of Wyoming alcoholic beverage control laws, uh, twenty dollars paid by Tanya Christensen doing business as Cap'n Bottle, uh, in and upon the premise of Stampede and highway sixteen bypass for an event more specifically described as follows, classic summer drags, drag races. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only, beginning on the nineteenth day of July twenty twenty-five at zero nine hundred AM through the twentieth day of July twenty twenty-five at zero nine hundred AM. Uh, do we entertain a motion to approve the twenty-four hour catering permit?
So. So.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. I think this is my, uh, letter. Yes, today, where's it up? All this is, all our word, that's just okay. All right, you've got a lot of business to do, it's getting a little late, so. All right. So, moving on to item number three. Now that we've approved all the twenty-four hour catering permits, to, uh, item number three, day dealers' request from the farmer's market. So, city of Newcastle, Newcastle, Wyoming, Narrows, and other city officials made this letter serve as an update to the progress of the Newcastle Farmer's Market for the summer of twenty twenty-five. In addition, a request to be made. First, we, the Newcastle Farmer's Market Board, would again like to show our appreciation to this council for working with us and allowing for the relocation of our market to its current downtown location, and that we can manage of the services, hospitality, and the uh, inconvenience of closing a side street during the Newcastle Farmer's Market. We appreciate the hard work of the city of Newcastle's maintenance staff and its supervisors. Going into the fourth week of our season and finishing an exciting alumni weekend, we have only seen our participation group, both on the vendor and customer side grow. We typically have food trucks on a regular basis that participate. Our customer, our customer numbers are in the hundreds each week, we feel that the transition of this location has not been a hindrance to our local producers and has helped keep customers and local patrons in the downtown area for an extended period each Thursday. The closing of the side street has not been an issue reported back to us. It goes a little, uh, it does get a little tight, there is set up and tear down, but that was expected. Both the city and First Northern Bank have been good partners in that coordinated effort. If any issues arise, please contact any member of our team, and we will do our best to address or lend possible solutions to those complaints. Uh, due to the increasing success of the numbers of customers, we are asking the city and its employees to consider making available a couple of small adjustments. If possible, a secondary trash can in the area to be available for cleanup purposes. It is always our goal to leave the area as nice or better than it found it. In addition, we are requesting the board to consider the possibility of centerline parking down Main Street in the block directly adjacent towards the west end of the market. Even though we asked for our vendors, uh, to park at the, at least a block from the market, spaces fill up fast, causing local participants, often elderly, to walk a block or more to participate. Adding the additional parking would help lessen that burden. We have spoken with area business owners, open during this time for any objection, and have only received positive feedback. Again, thank you for the cooperation and consideration. Sincerely, the Newcastle Farmer's Market Board, Abe Peters, the chair. So everybody has a map in front of them, and it's got a little pink line and some blue lines representing where the farmer's market is actually located. And they wanna block the centerline to allow for parking down the center of Main Street.
Like, would you want motorcycles?
Uh, like, for the motorcycles.
Well, you're looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think you'd better talk to Whiteout about this first. Because it is their motorcycles, they, we have to them request permission to put the motorcycles there.
Oh, yeah, oh, good point, thank you.
I would, I wouldn't feel comfortable blocking it off that way, I don't have permission.
Well, I move we give them the permission and table it until he gets permission from Whiteout, and then it's okay to re, re, approve it. Except for the seventh of August, which we've already approved for motorcycles. Cause they only need on Thursday, Thursday to seven. They only go on Thursdays. But can we do that?
I would just wing the table, the reason being is that contingent motions generally for something like that. I mean, if you give them the ability to do that, and Whiteout says no, then where are we at?
Oh, it's a condition.
And you could do, I guess you could do it conditionally, on Whiteout's permission, granting yes.
Okay, so I move that we allow day dealers and farmer's markets to have parking in the center of Main Street on every Thursday from now till the end of their season, except on August seventh, because we've already approved the motorcycles. Uh, on the condition that, uh, Greg, our, our, our public works can get permission from Whiteout to do so.
Okay, it's a very busy motion, but is there a second? We have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Okay, go ahead.
The problem with centerline parking with a bypass out, if they bring a white road through
The problem with centerline parking with a bypass out, if they bring a white road through, it's gotta come to you downtown. And if it's blocked off, they won't be able to get through.
May I make a suggestion, please?
Uh, okay. So, um, uh, yes, I mean, there were some safety concerns with people getting in an oil vehicle and having to open their door into traffic. Um, but it's, uh, uh, I'm sure that it'll be contingent on, um, whether or not, uh, Y O dot approves. So, go ahead.
Hey, uh, I guess, I mean, I'm worried about the interference with motorcycles and cars, you know, during rally. So if I actually knock it out during rally time. Alright, and as far as the safety issues, I guess also just as a business person, some of what it sounds says, don't allow it to the construction's knowledge.
Thank you, sir. Uh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to what Mr. Bus said there. We know when the bypass is going to be open? Because if it's still closed during the rally, how safe is it to have that centerline for motorcycles? If, why, I might, I've been down to the summer when a semi came through and it will take half or better of that center, that Main Street. And I wouldn't have a fifty thousand dollar motorcycle sitting on the road when a semi comes through there. So, if that bypass is still blocked off, you might wanna think about whether we allow the centerline to be blocked off for even motorcycle traffic.
Thank you for the comment. So we also need to remind folks that, um, on Warwick, the, the lot of, uh, the city hall sits on, we have a lot of extra additional parking over there if people park diagonally. So I talked to, um, Public Works Supervisor Greg Stumpf about moving the diagonal, uh, parking sign down to the end of the lot so that we can remind people, because there was people parking in there and parallel parking and taking up a lot of space and you could have fit a lot more cars in there than the old school area. So, uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing all those in favor?
There is, there is.
Caleb, go ahead.
I, I would be, I mean, my, my first concern with, with anything with regards to, you know, making adjustments for parking there is obviously safety. And I appreciate everybody bringing that up because when, when this first came up as an idea, that was my first concern. It's like, you know, I don't want somebody getting out of the car and, and having an accident because, you know, traffic's tight, somebody's in a hurry or whatever. And so, I mean, I'm definitely open to input on, on just the safety factor. And I should have drove by there before coming to the meeting here just to try to get a visual of it again. And I was trying to find some pictures of the motorcycles parked down there just to give me a better visual. And I, I know I've seen them there, but it's been a while. Uh, and so I'm just, you know, really open to any kind of suggestions and concerns there because first and foremost, we need to make sure we're thinking about the safety of, of everybody involved. Uh, both drivers using this, the road, you know, as well as those parking. And so, um, I don't know, from a public works standpoint, a law enforcement standpoint, obviously Whiteout has to weigh into this. You know, if there's any concerns, I, I know for me, I would really like to hear those and make sure that, that everything is weighed in this decision. Um, and is it, is there enough room to safely park a vehicle there? And is it gonna add enough parking that it warrants the hassle and everything else? Because it's gonna, it's gonna cause some hindrance, you know, I think just in the fact that you're shuffling out parking and, and traffic flows is occurring there. So, um, I, I would definitely welcome any input on any of that through this process. And again, I'm sure Whiteout will weigh all of that very heavily in, in, in their decision as well. But, uh, but while, while I understand parking is always one of the biggest issues with the farmer's market, every market I've ever been involved with, it's always a point of discussion at some point because everybody wants to park and walk ten feet to their favorite vendor. And that's just not realistic. But obviously, anything we can do to accommodate people and, and make it more accessible is helpful, uh, within reason, so.
Just so everybody knows, Caleb Carter is on the, uh, Farmer's Market Board.
Oh, yeah, I should have said that.
He's, he's involved with, uh, the Farmer's Market. So I just wanted to let everybody know. Yeah. Um, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I can see some, some really serious safety concerns with parking cars there with pedestrians walking back and forth. Um, not being able to see somebody step out on the crosswalk with a vehicle sitting there. One thing with bikes, if you can see over a bike, but if you get a pickup with a camper or a cop around behind it and you step out there, I see some concerns there, safety wise, personally.
So, with all of the concerns that have been raised and the fact that it'll end up going before Y O dot to see if they approve it, I mean, I could remind the council that if you think that this is a safety issue, that you can vote no. Or we can all vote yes and see if it passes muster, uh, with Y O dot. So anyway, with that, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, let's, uh, raise hands on the nay vote.
For nays?
Okay, nays have it. Um, we won't send it before Y O dot for the, uh, um, to the further approval. Motion fails.
Providing for my nay vote, it makes it kinda look like this, if pedestrian issues and then vehicles parked in there, you know, they're gonna be parked right up against each other. Not being able to see and turn and do next to that street.
It's bad enough with bikes.
Last year.
There's a lot of close calls.
When the bypasses, you know, were done, they brought some combines through there and they just kept knocking those orange things off.
Coals and the candlesticks.
Yeah, they just kept moving and knocking on the road and they were walking up behind them, setting them back up. And if they went out through Main Street like that, there's no way.
You're knocking off little lanes.
Cars, or I'm thinking, don't think it's weird, why?
Okay, uh, the motion failed. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on to old business. Uh, item number one under old business is a reading of ordinance number four, series twenty twenty-five, repealing ordinance section seventeen dash fourteen. Uh, ordinance number four, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance repealing ordinance section seventeen dash fourteen of the Newcastle Town Code. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Newcastle, Weston County, Wyoming. Section seventeen dash fourteen of Newcastle, Wyoming Municipal Code be repealed in its entirety and from the date of execution of this ordinance be of no further force and effect. We entertain a motion to pass, uh, ordinance number four, series twenty twenty-five on third reading.
Hearing a motion to pass ordinance number four, twenty twenty-five on third reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion carries. Moving on to item number two, third reading of ordinance number five, series twenty twenty-five, repealing ordinance section seventeen dash twenty-seven. Ordinance number five, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance repealing ordinance section seventeen dash twenty-seven of the Newcastle Town Code. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Newcastle, Weston County, Wyoming. Section seventeen dash twenty-seven of the Newcastle, Wyoming Municipal Code be repealed in its entirety and from the date of execution of this ordinance be of no further force and effect. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance number five, series twenty twenty-five on third reading? I might can motion approve it. We have a second? Second. We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number three, Powder River Energy Easement on Highway of the.
Okay, okay.
So, this came up at the last meeting. Uh, there were some concerns voiced by the council. Um, as to the scope and scale of what the city is actually responsible for at the, at the airport. Uh, or what the city actually owns. So, I don't know if there's, this is under citizens' business or this is under old business. So would anybody with the board like to come up and elaborate at all?
Sure.
They were hesitant about having me sign the agreement because.
Some several things up. Probably the, the most enlightening, one of the most enlightening things from Air Ops, everyone in the airport board. I've been here several times. Okay, uh, this was due to me. I did that in the middle of this. Uh, I have eleven acres of land and Powder River has a power pole on my corner of land. And I have a building twelve acre or five acres away. And I want them to put power to that. A meter. I have to sign them an easement to run their power pole to that building on my land. Even though it's my land, I still have to sign them an easement. That's basically what's going on on a airport. The power pole is on land that the county and the city mutually control. Okay, now, the question of where are you guys involved in this? We did some research, or I had, excuse me, the county heard me some research. I gave this to Stacy that this is from December seventh and eighth of nineteen fifty-four. And it's really small print, I know, about halfway down. Print is, so the City of Newcastle and Weston County jointly appoint a committee of five independent members to advise the city council and the county commissioners on matters pertaining to the airport of Weston County. That's where the board was first put together, nineteen fifty-four, December seventh and eighth. So the city council and the county commissioners, okay? Then, there's an initiative, excuse me, tough, what was this called again?
This was a master agreement. We've done, that's back to nineteen ninety-six.
This one here nineteen ninety.
Ninety-six.
Nineteen ninety-six, a master agreement. Between the two entities where it says, Mondelfield is owned by the City of Newcastle and Weston County and the local fixed base operator is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the airport. Those two things stipulate that the City of Newcastle is joint owner in Mondelfield. I think if you go back, Stacy, in probably the city records of nineteen fifty-four, you would find somewhere in December or maybe a month or two before that, where the council had a meeting about putting together an advisory committee with the airport. That's also when the FAA was established nationwide. And that's why then when the FAA says that counties and cities want funds, you have to have a joint group. That's where the bean came where cities and counties are mutual owners of an airport. I hope that satisfies you. Or clears things up, I should say.
If, if we drew a line down the center of the airport, then I would hope that the City of Newcastle would have beside with all of the buildings and.
I do know that any revenue that, this I talked to the county commissioner, the county commissioners about at their last meeting. Any revenue that we generate, which is basically rent, anger, rent and what little fuel we sell, that goes to the county treasurer and then they are issued a check to the city for your share.
Gives you a credit.
Gives you a credit, yes. So I guess it's not really a check. They just balance out the books to, to show that your part comes out. You get your part.
So I'm glad you came tonight to provide some clarification because we were really confused, like, of, you know, and then so some of the misgivings that maybe the council had in signing the agreement. So just because we didn't fully understand.
I left my phone, hold on, we have a hanger now that is ninety-eight percent done.
Yay.
But it has no power. And the biggest drawback now is when you sign the endorsement or the easement agreement, getting Powder River on the books to come out good, it could be six to eight weeks yet. So we have a list of people that are ready to lease hangers now.
Oh, we wanna try to get power to the building.
Oh, yeah.
And we're the ones that are holding you up right now.
Exactly.
So, I mean, we're, we're in a partnership with the county.
That's for everything.
All the way back from nineteen fifty-four.
Fifty-four, yeah.
So now that you've provided us clarification, um, I don't know, council, that puts your minds at ease as well, but I mean, that we're in a partnership fifty-fifty with the county for the, uh, category.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, I would pull the, actually some of the taxes.
Okay.
Yeah, but there are deeds. Uh, I don't recall the exact dates, but it is for the County Forty-five North, range sixty-two West. For that section sixteen, north half, northwest. The city and the county are both joint owners of actually multiple pieces of property, not all, I got to look through all of it, but, um, the, the city and the county are joint owners.
I was interested in that about a year and a half, two years ago and looked to it. The plot of the airport is confusing, you know, if you go back, because if you're back to the nineteen twenties, it was bed night pits out there and those were all sulked on and surveyed out and it's I finally, after about an hour and a half of looking at those, I still get fine. Yeah, but I, it, it is very, very confusing.
So I'm regarding order of something, we kinda like the buildings to have power, so would we, uh, have a party in motion that, uh, might start the, uh, uh, the agreement?
Your honor, I move we completely sign the agreement and set up the easement for the top roof to going up with some power over, uh, after it was.
Anger that had on Monday.
Second. Are we a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Stacy, have we been given those credits?
There's pretty likely a credit for the airport expenses.
It's not much enough because there's only one hanger rent coming in and the fuel costs are, I think quarterly that they compute. So, we haven't had a chance to generate this much revenue. And now with seven hangers available, or eight hangers, excuse me. I don't know if I explained to you how we're gonna do this, but we have an eight hanger bay. We, we have right now six, I won't say hundred percent commitments, but we had six peoples commit that they were renting for a reason for a year. We, we both have seven. We wanna keep one available for a nightly rent. At least. And that rate will be a seventy-five dollar a night rent. That's probably the one that will hopefully generate the most revenue because people fly in, stay one or two nights, will be able to put their airplane in there and that'll generate as much revenue hopefully a month as others generated a year. So, I mean, that, that's anticipating not a lot of money, but more than what's. So, I mean, that, that's anticipating not a lot of money, but more than what's been coming in.
Uh, what, what issues do you want to round for the other six people?
Hundred, I have a rental right here proposing, and of course, this is, uh, we're still finalizing this, but right now it's, it's a hundred twenty-five, excuse me, proposing a hundred twenty-five dollar a month, uh, for the hangar. And then all electrical costs will be, the leasing will have to pay the head electrical costs separately. So, that means they'll pay the meter and each meter or other costs will be those separate from. So, in a year's time, I don't remember pulling it yet, I had to sell my head, about twelve months, a hundred twenty-five dollars. Looking at a thousand... Whatever else.
Is that, did you guys check with the other airports around like do I have another charge or lost some?
Yes. In fact, uh, some are less, some are a little more, but they have, some hangers have heat, more heat in them, some insulation. I don't know, look at everything, but a hundred twenty-five dollars is not too cheap or not expensive.
Let's put that in, um, we can discuss this a little bit more, but let's just handle the business at hand. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Uh, I will sign the easement and now you can elaborate a little bit more.
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
Okay, uh, the other thing that we, we talked about as, as the committee is that if someone's gonna pay a year lease in advance, we would give them, I think, they'd all pay for ten months, but they signed for twelve. Very bad.
So, that's on the new hangar, right?
The new hangar.
Well, not the existing hangers.
It's a hundred twenty-five dollar. I think that's what you did, the one we have.
It's a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty. It's a...
It's not the whole hangar, it's the space in the hangar.
No, the space in the hangar, excuse me.
And the rest of the hangers are...
The rest of the hangers are private.
Yeah, they're private. And, and they don't pay?
They pay, the county, they know, they pay a per-foot charge that the county gets, the lease...
The county gets.
Yes, but you get a share of that because that's part of the structure.
So, it's not fifty-fifty?
Fifty-fifty, yeah, okay, fifty-fifty. You get, you... I wanna make sure I don't confuse myself or you guys because when I talk to my clerk, she makes it very clear to me that when the fees go in there, they are split fifty-fifty. Any revenue that we generate, they cut a credit to the city for fifty percent of it.
So, what's the credit for? Credit towards what?
It's our fifty percent.
It's your fifty percent. Stacy, can you explain it better than I said?
So, we get a bill from the county treasurer every month that has an outline of the airport expenses. Periodically, there's a credit, which is obviously from their income, and it is fifty-fifty.
But we get a bill from them for that?
We get a bill for airport expenses every month, yes.
That's a very split.
Because we owe fifty percent.
Well, it's not mine making a profit, yeah, but they don't make the money and it costs us a lot.
But they're gonna start making more money.
They could be looking forward to this.
That's what we're looking forward to.
Well, we are.
Start your own business.
Okay, do you have anything further to make sure, like, I mean, I think, I think it'd be beneficial if the county and the city got together, maybe we like had a meeting where we could try to like fully understand exactly the mechanics of the airport, how the partnership works. Um, so we just had a little bit, you know, one on all and done this and that. Because I mean, I was thinking, I was thinking, uh, the special district, airport district, and you got it done under your own scheme, like, uh, you know, I, um, you know, I, I thought about being in this partnership, but now that it seems that everything is fifty-fifty, it's been a longstanding relationship, it seems, so we continue in the direction.
The only thing I've been able to find out is, is right here in nineteen fifty-four, where you and the commissioners, the two, the city council and the commissioners divided or made, uh, excuse me, appointed a airport advisory committee. And somewhere along the line, I got appointed to be on the airport planning board. And we never went from a committee to a planning board. We just, we're still a committee and they're prepared to play, but commissioners call us a planning board. But that's a place that that's wishy-washy.
I was saying, not with you.
I'm with you, I'm with the committee. Or maybe make us a board, get more power on board.
Well, thanks for coming out.
So, this, this actually brings up another concern. If this is actually the way that this works, that the county is giving us credit for the way that airports run, and we get a budget request from these guys every year to include utilities, general maintenance, isn't that all factor into what we should be giving credit
So, that budget or that workshop where we all sit down and talk about this would probably be in order, uh, so that we can understand this.
That's what, when we commit, when we go to that, we present the budget. We present, you get the same budget that we get the county, thirty thousand dollars, they pay half you pay. It's not thirty from you and thirty from them. It's a whole budget is what we show you. You just report it for half of it. That's like when we went to the financing for this main one hundred thousand dollar hangar project. It was gonna be a four percent match, two from you, two from the county, two percent. That's why the, the federal government and the state says you have to come up with four percent. It was two from each entity. That's why you got a main one hundred thousand dollar hangar for right around ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think we ended up paying like twenty-nine grand, I thought.
I think it should be a little less than that. How low, I, I'll know what about a month.
I'd have to look back.
Yeah.
I think we ended up someday like there was like an... But anyway, no big deal. I appreciate you being here. Is there any further questions? Any other questions? Uh, thank you very much for coming tonight and, uh, that, that actually helped a lot.
So, if you're those deeds, council, that looks good.
Um, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to new business, there is none. Moving on to committee and council on the reports, item number one, uh, the Wyoming Government Investment Fund. When I was down at, uh, the Lam conference, I made the acquaintance of Joan Evans, she's the program administrator for, uh, Wyoming Government Investment Fund. Uh, she has agreed to come to our next regularly scheduled council meeting to provide a block of instruction for us on, uh, uh, what the program is and, uh, what kind of returns we can get, um, through investing some of our money out of the general fund, uh, money that we normally just leave sitting there. And then, uh, also between now and next meeting, I will, uh, track down some folks with, uh, with YO Star, the YO Star program. Uh, there's been a bunch of updates on the way that we're allowed to invest our money and, and how we're allowed to leave the money out of the fund. Uh, but the last four years that I've been on the council, I didn't know us to do anything with our money that we have sitting in YO Star. And now that we have all these wonderful projects that we're looking into and, and we have some things going on, it, it would be good to know if we can actually get into that YO Star account and maybe utilize some of that money for a good purpose. Um, don't wanna leave it sitting around and get dusty. So, like I said, Joan Evans is gonna meet, uh, with us at seven fifteen at the next regularly scheduled council meeting and, uh, give her, give us some insight as to our program and how it works. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing on, we'll move on, uh, to item number two, um, the proposed pocket park. Uh, I did some digging today. There was some concerns about what the city's liability would be, uh, for said pocket park. Uh, next, the cash box for analytics. I went and sat down with, uh, Mrs. Cash today. Uh, she said she would be willing to enter into a ten-year lease for ten dollars. Uh, they don't, they, they just had some concerns about whether it would impact their taxes negatively if we improved the space, so they'd have to pay extra taxes. And they didn't want to be held liable for anything. Uh, that was one of the concerns that was voiced by Attorney Hughes. I did some talking today and I talked with the, uh, uh, city administrator for Lovell, the town of Lovell. They have pocket parks all over there and they have a nice skate park. They've got a lot of nice things about it. So, um, yeah, their city administrator told me that, um, the way they do it in their community is, uh, property owner, uh, just has a agreement with the city that the city maintains that space, but they actually like, it's still their property and then they can kick the city out whenever they want. But some of those pocket parks have been going for like thirty, forty years, you know? So, anyway, uh, I tried to call the LGLP. I finally got ahold of them. They said that they don't do pocket parks. So, then they steered me towards, uh, WORM, which is the Wyoming Association of Risk Management. So, the Wyoming Association of Risk Management is actually the ones who ensure pieces of land like this to make sure that the city isn't liable. Uh, we already paid WORM, uh, thirty-nine thousand dollars, um, we are within the program. So, the pocket park would add a little bit more to the footprint, so our premium would probably go up a little bit to have said, uh, pocket park. But I don't, we already paid thirty-nine thousand dollars and there's been a lot of people that have been trying to get this done for a long time. Um, I've heard people approaching the caches about this for the last fifteen years and we finally agreed. Uh, and they're also amicable to us, maybe looking at funding and citing like a bathroom or something on the property. It already has a super large cap that might need to be upgraded. But, uh, there's been concerns from business owners downtown. They would like to see some public restrooms, um, uh, in the downtown area. And, I mean, we're not citing anything too crazy. I kind of have a vision for the property where, uh, maybe we have some shadow boxes so that the high school kids can hang their art, maybe, uh, you know, a few benches and some lighting, just to make it inviting and make it like a nice space on our main street, make our main street a little bit more inviting. Well, I guess I'm asking the council is, having our partnership with WORM that we already pay for and making sure that our liability is covered, uh, would we enter in motion with having Attorney Hughes draft up a, uh, a lease of the caches for ten dollars for ten years so that we can utilize that space?
So moved. I think it's a great idea.
Do we have a second? Do we have a motion properly seconded? Um, is there any discussion?
I went down there and looked at that and there's two, two beautiful walls, you know, like some murals. And when, when the bank told me they were gonna tear down the one building with the mural on it, uh, that, that's, I knew this for a long time. I, I hired a, a photographer and she went down and took some real high pixel pictures of, of that mural so that we can reproduce it on some other type of, I don't know, I don't know. But anyway, we can reproduce that mural. I took the, I had to go down and take a picture of the one that's all falling apart on the other building downtown or down at the hurricane. On that building, it's all kind of flipping off and flaking away. So, we took pictures of both those murals so we could reproduce those murals on those two walls and, and preserve them. And I, I did, I just love your idea. I just think a pocket park would be cool. It's just been sitting there full of weeds all week here.
And do you need okay from Mr. Ironclad for that?
Pardon?
We need to get an okay from Mr. Ironclad for that?
Well, I think we should at least ask him and then see if we all, if we kept preserving his artwork. And I think he's gonna say, yep.
Okay, I think we should go.
Oh, yeah, we should help him.
Is there any discussion?
I think this is a good area there to kind of dress up.
Yes.
Would like to kind of see some thought process of what's, what we're thinking. Obviously, ten dollars is much that are invested. I'd like to kind of see some conceptual ideas of what we're thinking of doing there.
A lot of context.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I'm serious. Send in your ideas for the...
I know I was the one that, so the years ago, like, talked to him about trying to either fortify that back into their little ways and plus some benches and then being like a mural wall.
Oh, yeah.
Just for a seating area. I think we're a pound for one thousand. We didn't get anything off the ground at that time. I think you were probably on that discussion at that time.
Let's go for it.
Just one comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I remember correctly, that one mural from, uh, Ironclad, it was like ten thousand dollars.
But we're just taking a picture.
Oh, you just wanna take a picture and put it on the building?
We can't, which he's not doing, you know?
Oh, okay.
He's, he's done.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, he, he said that that one at the library was his last one, right?
Oh, I know.
We just need, I think we need his permission to reproduce it, you know?
Yeah, really, it's a, it's a...
Go ahead.
I think it would be interesting to get the school kids involved, you know, designers or whoever wants to maybe go into that field or whatever, give them some, I was thinking about that.
I was really hoping to use some volunteer work and then get in there and then try to make the cities, um, you know, a minimal expense. So, and I'm, I was really hoping that maybe we could approach some of the business owners in the community about donating some of the materials that we might possibly need. But, um, council and scheme said that was a good point. It'd be good to have a solid design concept first and then, um, and then we could move forward, but... Is there any further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Let me slide that out.